Rob Turner. We have what's called pods. These are clinics that feed our hospital and who is the doctor in charge of that hospital, Dr. Sanjay Wathley, in our Duncanville area. Sanjay Wathley. There are three centers that we have developed. We're going toward Excellence Inn, and that's our Women's Momography Center that we just opened with the 3D mammography, the only 3D mammographies centered outside of two other facilities here in the city. We have our Diabetic Center that just opened, and also our Wound Care Center. We are very proud of our Wound Care Center because we believe in Lems Savage in a very real way. So if anyone has wounds or anything of that nature, send them to University Hospital. And every Thursday from 10:00 to 12:00, in this auditorium are senior citizens from all over the community. They have a Q&amp;A for five minutes, and then they play bingo and have lunch. So if you have any senior citizens who want to participate in that, feel free to send them every Thursday. My name is Warren Irvin. I'm Vice Chairman of the Board.
Now with that, Scott, we'll begin to remind you, we're getting ready to talk about the budget. We know we have a lot of problems in the neighborhood, but we're going to talk about the budget, okay? Then after we talk about the budget, we can huddle on the outside, we can get all the names, addresses, and the complaints. We'll talk about the stray dogs, the trails, the code enforcement, the high weeds, the boarded houses, the drug houses, all of the issues that may be on your mind. But we want to concentrate in here tonight on the money and how we can keep Dallas flowing. So we're going to be talking about the budget. We'll see you on the outside to get all of your different concerns, should you have any. And I know that we do have a plan. And we'll do that at that point. How about this, Scott?
That's a plan. So I think it's time to bring up, we should welcome our first Assistant City Manager, Ryan Evans, is here. So we're going to turn the show over to him. He's going to walk through the budget, and then we'll do some Q&amp;A.
Thank you, Councilman. How's everybody doing tonight?
All right.
Can you hear me okay? I'm not quite as loud as these two over here, so I don't know if that's good or bad. As Mr. Carraway said, this is the proposed budget. What the staff generally does is we start working in really about as soon as the budget before is finished, we kind of start all over again with the next year, really get cracking about January, and work through the spring. And summer gets pretty intense as we try to figure out what to do with limited dollars. And by charter, we have members, the city manager has to present his or her budget by August 15th of each year. What happens then is the council starts digesting it, they receive input from y'all, and decide if they want to change the budget. Now, I have done 30 budgets at this point, and I have never seen the council not change the city manager's budget. So I would be shocked if that were ever to happen. So what happens is they go out to the communities and they find out where additional resources are needed, and perhaps where resources can come from, and modify the city manager's budget. The council's expected to adopt the budget on September 17th, and the new budget begins on October 1st. And of course, it goes all the way back around, and the process starts all over again. So I've got a number of charts and graphs here. I'm not going to bore you too much with them, but I'll go ahead and get started. A couple of years ago, Judy remembers, I had to go out to the Keyste Recreation Center and talk about how we were going to cut library hours, and we're going to cut back on the parks, and we're going to cut back on mowing, and we're going to stop buying as many library books. And there was a number of pretty severe cuts that we were going to have to make. We cut secretaries, and people all for the organization, in fact, 1,600 people, positions went away through the recession. And that was a pretty dark time, and the public took it as well as the public can. But we're really quite proud to say that Dallas' economy's coming back, and it's coming back in a really good way. And so now it's a matter of how we reposition these new resources and deliver as many services as we can, and be as prudent as we can with your money. So the budget is balanced, of course. All of the services we presently have continue. So there are no service reductions in the proposed budget. The tax rate remains the same at 79.70. There is a water rate increase to continue to invest in our infrastructure, and there is a sanitation residential rate to invest in two things. One, fleet maintenance and replacement. You've seen some of these trucks go through your neighborhoods, and you know we need to do a little work there. And the second part of that is to establish basically a storm fund. I don't know what it is, but Dallas has been having one major storm every year that comes through and knocks all our tree branches down. And we all know that, and so we're actually wanting to allocate some resources so we have money for overtime to go clean all this up the next time the storm comes. And it's kind of, we all know. In terms of economic indicators, we watch Dallas' economic indicators very closely. And frankly, we're doing better than the state and the country. Our unemployment rate is 5.1%, and the nation's is 6.1%. Now, during the peak of the recession, our unemployment rate was higher than 10%. And so it's half that now, so that's good news. In terms of job growth, the state's growing about 3.5%, we're growing about 4.3% as it relates to overall job growth. And of course, the property base itself came in at 6.75% up. I haven't seen anything like that for quite a number of years. And more than that, the commercial tax base is finally growing faster than our residential tax base. And that's what we've been wanting. We wanted to push this over on the commercial side so to ease the pressure on the residential side. The council members don't know this, but we did a quick little analysis of the suburbs around Dallas, you know, Richardson, Duncanville, DeSoto, Garland, and all of that. And we grew faster than they did. So remember when they used to say that Dallas was the hole in the donut, you know, and we were the ones that were pulling everybody down? Now it looks like we're ones lifting them up. And so that's a nice reversal. And so we're actually growing faster than they are, and I'm proud of that. Our sales tax continues to grow, we're about, probably going to go up about 4%. Now, the property tax base, this is an interesting chart. You can see from about 1994 all the way through 2009, our tax base grew. And that was a really nice steady tax base growth. And then you see that little dip? That's when it hit. And that's when we had to come out here and talk about cutting services and cutting back. And now you can see over the last three years, our property tax base, the value of our city, is going back up. New construction values, in 2008, we had $2.4 billion added to our tax base in new construction. That was really good, and then it hit. It dropped all the way to 2012, and now you can see it's starting to come back. The tax base we're working off right now has $1.6 billion in new value in it. That's good, because the more new construction we have, the less pressure there is on the rest of us for service funding. And so we want that to continue to go up. I will say, looking at building permits for the current year, we've had about $3 billion worth of new construction. So that's going to hit the tax base eventually. And you can see that we've got some good news coming down the pipe. I'm really happy about that, too. Sales tax, this is, sales tax is very volatile. When we pick up the paper and you see good news, for whatever reason, we'll go out and buy our refrigerator. If we pick up the bed, see bad news, we are not touching the wall link. And that is just the way we are as a people. And you can see it goes up and down, and up and down, and up and down. And right now, though, the last few years, I think we felt pretty confident, and we're out there buying that fridge, I guess. Financial overview more. Our overall budget is $2.81 billion. That's down slightly from the current year, but only because our capital program's not as big. The budget's broken into the operating budget, you can see that, and the capital budget. The operating budget is, again, what funds our day-to-day operations, and the capital budget's what fixes and constructs new stuff. Now, if you look at those brown boxes on the right, the one we pay the most attention to is the general fund, and it's about $1.17 billion. And that's where our property taxes go and our sales taxes go. So that's the one that we're most sensitive of, because that's the one we're all paying for. The next page, this is basically a pie chart that shows all the different funds. And you can see the general fund's about 42% of the budget, and the water fund's about 22% of the budget. And I always have to embarrass Jody. Jody's our water director right there on the second row. There she is. Okay. She runs, believe it or not, Jody's budget is about one-third of the entire budget of the city, the water and wastewater program. And in North Texas, in the semi-area, that's a big deal. The general fund, another way of looking at it, our property taxes and our sales taxes make up about 68% of the general fund budget. So that's, again, that's where the lion's share of our money goes, right there. This next chart's kind of interesting. We are having some additional resources that are falling into the budget, as I mentioned. We've got about $19.1 million in new sales taxes in the coming year, and about $36.4 million in new property taxes. Without raising taxes, we're getting that much more money. But we have a number of one-time revenues in the current year. And if you were to back all those out, that would cost us about $17 million. And if you were to pay for what's called the Meet and Confer Agreement with the firefighters and the police department, that takes about $24.3 million to pay for all of that. It's a three-year agreement. This particular year, it costs about $24.3 million. If you pay for all of that, most of the revenues are gone. We just have a couple hundred dozen dollars left. So what we had to do is we had to go and continue to squeeze the rest of the city's budget so we could restore some of these services. Now, the good news is we've swallowed most of the meet and confer costs. There'll be more, of course, but it won't be as significant as this year. So in the future, if the economy continues to grow, we'll have additional money to either provide more services, figure out a way to fix our infrastructure, or reduce the tax rate. The overall general fund expenses, you can see about 59% goes to public safety. The next page is basically by department. You can see the police is about 38% of the budget, and fire department's about 20% of the budget. So again, a big part of the general fund. Now, in terms of some of the services that we're talking about changing, first, the meet and confer agreement that I talked about earlier. It's about $24 million in new costs, and that provides the police and firefighters what's called an additional step, a step as they go through their career path. And they will get, unless they're topped out, at the end of their careers with all the steps, they will receive a 5% step raise and a 4% across-the-board raise. Now, the way the contract was written is if the tax base went up a certain percent, they would get an across-the-board raise all in one year. And they won't get another one during the contract. But because the tax base went up so significantly, they got all of the raise all at once. And again, there won't be another one during the term of the contract. Now, what the police department has been learning is that technology can really help reduce crime. And so we have what's called hotspots around the city. There's 27 different areas around the city called hotspots. They make up about 7% of the land area of Dallas. But in that 7%, we have 30% of Dallas' crime. And so Mr. Carraway has been a big proponent of providing cameras and license plate readers so you can find stolen cars in these particular hotspots. And we're able to add nine more of these areas this next year with cameras and license plate readers. That helps the police department, because they can monitor the neighborhoods, major thoroughfares and that sort of thing, from City Hall, the basement of City Hall. And when they do see something, they can send folks out. So it really does augment the police department. So we're able to provide more of those. Now, we're going to have about 200 police officers retire this current year, but we're only going to replace them with 165 officers. Now, there's a couple reasons for that. One, we have this new technology. Two, the chief is going to take 37 officers that are presently doing desk jobs and send them back out to the field. And he's going to hire civilians that are going to look like police officers to do nonviolent crime investigation. We're saving about $800 million by working with Fort Worth.
We're saving $250 million.
Oh, we're saving $250 million. Okay, well, a little bit of money. $250 million by working with Fort Worth. And so that'll provide additional water from East Texas. And so that's a big project. We're doing work on Elm Fort, and we're doing a lot of rehab and replacement. So we're continuing to ask for a rate increase in the water department. The rate increase adds up to about $1.15 for each of us for the average home. And about 86% of us will have about a $2 a month rate increase. Next page basically shows how this works for you. If you're living in a condo, you use very little water, you have about a $0.36 rate increase. If you are living on Preston Road, okay, your rate increase will be about $15. In terms of capital budget and debt service, this next page just mentions some of the major projects the city's going to be working on this next year. Street resurfacing, alley reconstruction, street reconstruction, bike trail system, again, Jody's wastewater mains, part of the chain of lakes, and other projects. The capital budget itself is on the next page. And again, the water department is the lion's share of the capital budget for the city. In terms of our schedule, again, the city manager presented his budget on Tuesday. The town hall meetings begin at 9:00. The first set will be 9:00, town hall meetings around the city. And that goes on for a few weeks. There'll be a couple of budget workshops with the city council. There is a public hearing that I want to bring to your attention. August 27th is basically a hearing. Anybody in the city that wants to talk about the budget can come down and talk to all 15 city council members on that day, 1 o'clock. And you don't even have to sign up, just show up. You can see there are a couple of other different steps at the budget process. Again, on September 17th, the council's expected to adopt the budget, and October 1st, the next fiscal year begins. And so that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to your hosts. Mr. Carraway wants me to do this. All right, so any questions?
I love downtown Dallas. I'm a walker. I love to walk, right? Is there something that we can do when the dogs are out walking, when they're not urinating on the streets?
Well, obviously, the dogs are not supposed to be urinating on the streets. And what I'm guessing is, if you're a regular walker, and they're a regular walker, they're going to walk at the same time virtually every day, right? Okay. Our animal control folks can work on that. If you contact us and let us know when that is. Or you can say...
Well, see, I don't just think about me. I think about people that are coming from other places to visit.
That would be embarrassing for us.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
And it is.
You said that sanitation, there was going to be an increase, and one of them was the cost of replacement. They're replacing the trash cans?
No, no, ma'am. You've already paid for those trash cans. When yours wears out, you get another one for free, okay?
That's what I'm saying. On Long Street, on Dogwood, when they come through, they drop the trash cans, and they hit the break-in, they are not being considerate of the trash cans. And I think something needs to be done, I definitely think that we have to replace it.
Well, that your driver needs to be talked to.
Well, I want to thank y'all for the increases that are proposed in the staffing for the library system. It's well deserved. It's long overdue. Because we serve the community, everyone, regardless of income. But what I do need to ask y'all, if you can find extra money, program. We don't have any money for programming. Currently, anything that's done in a public library that's programming-related is privately funded. Everything from construction paper to storytimes to GED classes, ESL classes, all of that's private. And really, when we get the expanded hours, that gives us an opportunity to help educate all the people who don't speak English, which is about 40% of the population of the city. It helps the people who need to get a GED, which is about 35% of the adults south of the Trinity. And with GEDs now, you cannot take that class, you cannot do the test unless you have a computer. So they need access to computers. A lot of folks don't have them down here. And it's really, it's investing in our human capital. And if we can find some dollars there, every little bit will help, because every person that gets a job because of that is someone else who's going to spend more money in Dallas and help build that tax base. So that's my big thing. And then I'll go to streets. Zane Boulevard, for some reason, as soon as they finish fixing it and get it patched and replaced, they tear it up again. And if it's the water department, I don't know, every time I turn around, they're tearing up Zane Boulevard yet again.
Let me just first say just a couple of things. As related to the library, this particular budget, and as Scott alluded to, this is my eighth. There've been budgets where we started $53 million in the hole. I think last year, we were like $33 million in the hole. This time, it was 13. But we were able to find the money to restore. And now what we have to do moving forward is to maintain where we are. And so we have to put up with it. I agree with you with programming. I think since we've restored the hours, now we must maintain where we are. And next budget, and I hate to say next budget, but next budget, then at that point, we should concentrate on programming as well as maintaining. So that's a good point. As related to the street, I'm glad that Jody is here as well, and streets are here. It is my understanding, when they are replacing the old pipes, and the old pipes that have been in the ground forever, or a water main break, what the water department does, and the street department does, they, when they put it back over, instead of putting a finish on it, they allow it to have about 30 days so that they can go back over it just in case something breaks, something's not right, they don't have to bust back up the concrete and do all of that. So we do know, and we have understood and accepted the fact, that we're going to give it about 30 days. Now, we're not supposed to give it 60 days, or 90 days, or 120 days. So if it gets beyond a long-term period of time, then we need to make some calls. And that's the way it has been explained to the Dallas City Council. And then I understand it. When they finish the project, then it's supposed to be done. But until that time, they want to kind of leave it so it'll be much simpler to go back if they have to do some additional work.
Work on our major thoroughfares. So more and more streets will be repaired in the coming year. Also, we've had some trouble with our street lights, or traffic signals, excuse me. They're aging. And so we found out that there was a state grant available. If we put a little money in, then we can get resources from the state. So we're able to replace some of our traffic signals. City manager wants to create a new department called Planning and Neighborhood Vitality. He believes that we don't do an adequate job of neighborhood planning, or neighborhood strategic customer service, or neighborhood problem solutions. And so this is a small department to basically attack issues on a neighborhood basis. We also, on the next page, want to dedicate a couple of positions in building inspection to help out small business in Southern Dallas. And our development process is really not that difficult if you have zoning attorneys and development coordinators and a large firm that knows how to maneuver our systems. But if you just want to open up a Dairy Queen, it can be daunting. And so we want a couple people to help maneuver the system, to help out in Southern Dallas. We also, there's basically a tax credit that a lot of people don't know about. It's called the Earned Income Tax Credit Program. Whereas if you're an employed person of a certain income level, and you have children, you're eligible for this tax credit. A lot of people don't take advantage of it. It could be as much as $4,500 per family. And so this is not bad. This is basically a public awareness pot of money so folks can learn about this. In San Antonio, almost over 30,000 people take advantage of this program. We're about 8,000. So more people need to know about it. We want to continue to fund our Trinity River Corridor projects. There are a lot of those that are coming online. Last year, we added some additional money to Fair Park in the surrounding area. We basically, it's called Turn On The Lights. The Fair Park has got a lot of new stuff going on. And so we could have stopped that, but we're recommending to continue another year. And Mr. Griggs, one of his favorite programs is the bike lanes. And so that program is going to continue in the coming year. In clean, healthy environment, the council members received a whole bunch of emails about animal control or animal services. I don't even know what you guys have been through, can't believe. So there were several things they were asking for, food, medicine, neutering spang, and also some operation stuff for a pet adoption center in North Dallas to kind of mirror the one we have in Westmoreland. So all that's funded within the budget. We also are beginning, Mr. Carraway, single-use bag ordinance this year in January. And so we'll be planning on doing enforcement for that. Additionally, we always want to make sure we have enough money for demolition. We're adding a little money for that, so if our blighted structures, we have the ability to take them down. The seniors of our community have asked for another medical van to take folks to their appointments. That's funded. The bridge downtown needs a little additional operating assistance, and that's funded. Now, as for the residential one-day garbage collection, that will continue. I talked about the fee earlier. In Culture Arts and Recreation, this one has probably been even as loud as animal control, and that has to do with library hours. But we were able to come up with $3.1 million to go to seven-day-a-week library hours, and about half of the system. So that's a long way from where we are now. And next year, we would do the other half. And so over the course of two years, we would go to seven days a week in all of our libraries. Already with what we have in the proposed budget, it exceeds our peak hour, system hours in the library system. In the materials budget, we're increasing that to an all-time high from $4 million to $4.2 million for library materials. Also, I guess talk about that. The next page, I can't really read this without my glasses, but it talks about the libraries that will be restored first in January and then later in the spring. And it does have Dunbar on this particular list, so that'll come up pretty soon. Okay, Culture Arts and Recreation, we had some requests for some additional cultural dollars for our small and emerging cultural institutions. We have that. We have public art around town, like you know the statue in front of City Hall, the arts that are in front of our libraries, that sort of thing. We have not been maintained. And so we've added dollars for that. The Music Hall and Salmon Center, we're in need of assistance with their utilities. A lot of our other facilities, we pay the arts with utilities, but we don't for them, and so we are. Recreation Center, this is kind of the sister of the library hours. We're talking about increasing about 7,200 programmable hours in our recreation centers. And so 24 will be additional hours this next year, including Keyste, Beckley Sanger, Kids Green, Third Grade Marshall, will all get expanded hours. That'll give us additional evening and Saturday hours, fitness center hours, adult and youth sports. All of that will be easier to manage by having more hours at the recreation centers. And you can see those on this next chart. You can see it. I might not be able to. E-government, we have a lot of folks that say that we're antiquated to all this technology. So we're beginning to invest in technology, and you can see some of the systems on this page. And additional staff to basically strengthen our transparency, oversight, and internal controls. That sounds really boring until you read it in the paper, City of Dallas loses this, or City of Dallas has inadequate controls, and that sort of thing. It's boring, but if you don't have it, it can be pretty embarrassing. In terms of workforce impact, I talked about the meet and confer, that is, of course, is completely funded. As for the civilians, we have built in a 3% merit that we're doing $1.7 billion bond. What Scott has led the charge on is to put in the fine print, the very thing that we're discussing. How much is that $1.7 billion? How much is it going to cost? When you go voting on it, you're voting on $1.7 billion, but we're not disclosing to you the debt service associated with it. So we're probably paying $2.00 billion for the $1.7. So I just want you all to know that he led the charge on that. And you'll see those types of things on the chart.
Thank you. That's Proposition 1. Deny propositions unless you have to.
Scott, just question over here.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes.
I'm in all of Constance, and I have a question regarding, this is regarding the police department, regarding the tag area. What is considered a tag area, and what classified, and what are we doing about the tag area? Because off of Keyste and Pope, where I live at, it's considered as a tag area, and I don't see any changes in our area as far as, you know, based on the tag area as far as technologies, what we're supposed to have that.
I'll start, and then I'll hand it over to the police department. I live in a tag area myself, and I didn't know I lived in a tag area. But I don't have the technology yet either. It's coming, I think, with this budget. But what's going on in the tag areas is you have a lot more patrol, okay? You have a lot more, you have a lot more police presence. As time goes on, you'll have the cameras, the license plate readers, you may have bike patrols, you may have someone on a horse, you may have someone walking, but you're going to have a lot more patrols and a lot more focus on your area. And again, the tags have 30% of the city's crime with only 7% of the area. I'll show you the map here in a minute so that you know where you live relating to the tags. But the tags are basically established, basically through science that we go through, and we actually measure the incidence of crime, and prioritize the census blocks, tracks, whatever it is, with the highest crime in the city, and then rank them. And the technology's going in based on the ranking. And the technology's going in based on the ranking of the, of the tag areas. So I'll, I'll show you the map here in a second. Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Just to echo what Mr. Davis stated, those areas that are called tags are analyzed every year, updated, some drop off, some remain on the list. Keith Pope, as you know, has been on the list for basically a few years since there's been an issue with that program. We are, as the council member also noted, trying to expand the number of stationary license plate readers. We have mobile ones as well, vehicles and officers operate. So it's a matter of both, we have stationary and mobile ones. And whenever we have employees in tag areas, particularly the license plate readers in cars, we'll go into the tag area. So it's not always just, you know, the stationary ones which are monitored downtown, we have ones that are being monitored in a squad car, that would be different parts of the town. I will, I will count a little tour on over there here in Southwest. We have, there was quite a, quite a bit of reduction in crime this year. As you're probably aware, we've had ten, say, fifty years of obvious crime reduction. We're twelve into this year already here in Southwest, we've had about fourteen percent reduction this year. This could apply, we've seen over a hundred percent reduction in crime size.
But what we need to have around this park is vibrant neighborhoods. We need to have the streets taken care of, we need sidewalks where there are no sidewalks, we have residents coming down rugged, we have bicyclists that are coming from North Oak Cliff riding down here. They'd love to see bike lanes along rugged and Perryton to come to the park. We'd love to have that because we want this to be a vibrant community. But if you don't get the infrastructure, if you don't get the roads, if you don't get the sidewalks, if you don't get the code cleaned up, you're not gonna have people come use this wonderful park. We have to address our code issues around Dallas. We need more code officers south, in the gross south community, not north Dallas. This is where we've got the problems, and we need to address it, so we need to work together. But I will piggyback on what Karen said. Dallas Animal Services is a very important part of the city. We have a large pet population, we have a large population of people that walk their dogs at Keast Park, but the problem is, if you watch those dogs that are walking, they do not have tags on them, they don't have, that, that means, one, they may not be registered, one, they may not be vaccinated. This is a high parbo area, and we need to make sure our pets, they're our family members. We need to make sure the pets are taken care of. So it's very important that Dallas Animal Services is fully funded with what they ask for, to be taking care of all the pets.
I, I fully agree, and I can tell you what, Dwayne and I are gonna be focused on next week, is the last budget, because of everyone that spoke out on animals, we put in money for, was it close to sixteen or so? Animal control people, and we found out positions aren't always getting filled, and so that, that's unacceptable. So I can tell you, next week, Dwayne and I are gonna bring that up at, at the budget workshop with the ACMs and the city manager, is when you all speak, you say you want to see these people, you pay it with your tax dollars, we need to get those positions filled at the city. And as you can tell, what we're hearing tonight from everyone so far, is about the quality of life issues. It's about your streets, your parks, your rec centers, your libraries, and the arts. Everything that makes this a great place to live, once you feel safe from crime. And that's what we're focused on in this budget, freeing up resources to do it, and we're looking for better ways to do it right on the animal program. We're still trying to get the registrations down. There was an audit that came out a couple of years ago that said that most people don't get a renewal notice in the mail. So all you go, and you go register an animal, and not everyone, not, some people do, but not everyone gets the notices like they should to renew their registrations for their pets. And so that's something we're working on, because we should get, we should get that just right every time. So we're working on that. This budget, we're gonna look to increase efficiencies, we're gonna make sure every single position that we budget goes ahead and gets filled, because that's the only way to deliver the service to all of you. So let me tell you, that's gonna be a priority next week for Dwayne and myself.
Just this week alone, we've had two starving dogs come into our yard, just in one week. So that's an example of what's been going on.
That's perfect.
Can I add?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to commend the city manager and city council for their effort in putting this together in a fiscal, responsible manner, and particularly with balanced budgets and no project tax increases. One of the things that caught my attention was the set-aside funds for the storm cleanup. I think that's a very wise type of thing we've got here. So, to that end, I have a question. Is there anything else that we're considering now that our economy is coming back a little better and the revenue is coming back? Is there anything else we've considered in the good times, such as perhaps paying off bonds for the single debt service or any other set-aside funds? I consider that like putting money in savings, or whatever we need.
I'll start, and I'll head over to the council when you chop it up a bit on this one. Of course, you're always second ahead, and you're always hoping that the, the economy stays strong, and, and, and when it is, we have, we have a daunting task ahead of us. And it's not so much the debt as it is the fact that we, that we don't, we have, we need to issue more, or we need to fix more infrastructure. We've got about nine hundred million dollars, back to Judy's comment, on street repairs that need to be done. That is really important, because fixing our streets and improving our, our curb appeal of our communities lifts the whole community up. And so we have got to figure out a way to get our arms, move our arms around this infrastructure issue. And if we can pay down the debt faster so that we can issue more, great, I think that's, and maybe a combination of both, but I think that's the next, the next issue to tackle once we get to the, through these quality of life issues.
That is what we're looking at the council. There's a movement to go for not everything, but some things pay as you go. Every buck the City of Dallas borrows, the City of Dallas pays back a dollar forty. So if you borrow a million dollars, that means over twenty years, that's seventy thousand dollars less than city services you receive per year over twenty years. We pay everything back from the same pot, so we're well aware of that, and this budget, there is a movement on the council to start looking at which things we move to pay as you go. For example, should we have a master lease program and have a relationship with the bank to borrow money to purchase heavy equipment? Probably not with the City of Dallas. We should probably set that up so we can pay for that as we go. So there is a movement right now in the city council in these good times, and we're gonna get, hopefully, a good run here, six, seven great years, but I hope, but, yeah, whoever goes up, goes down. We've all seen the cycles, and so that's what we're gonna be working on. How can we make some things pay as you go? So we are looking at that.
Let me just say, Scott has been extremely modest, and the reason I say I love him on the city council, and I've nicknamed him Chucky. This is Chucky, I want you all to know that. I talk about that little bad dog, Chucky. But, but, but Scott has led the charge on some things, and, and when he's out front leading charges, a lot of folks may not understand it, may not appreciate, but at the ease of the day, when you listen to what his motivation is behind it. When we have our charter
Houses have the police department squad cars, and we've got four types of squad cars. We've got the chargers that the officers like, I believe, we've got the Impalas they don't like so much, we've got the Intrepid that they really, really don't like. And we've got the Tauruses they, they hide, okay? They don't, they just don't like them all. So what we're gonna do is we basically revamp the way we're gonna do the fleet. We're going to take the old Impalas, sell them. We're gonna take the Impalas that are a hundred thousand miles and move them over to non-p patrol and get rid of those Tauruses and those Intrepids, and the entire patrol fleet will be the chargers. So you'll have a consistent charger patrol fleet. Now, because the chargers don't cost as much to maintain, we're going to increase their age from a hundred thousand to a hundred and ten thousand miles, and that saves another two million dollars. So between the two million dollars for the officers and the two million dollars for the squad cars, we're able to put more services back, like libraries and other things. And by the way, crime is now down sixty percent in the last eleven. Awesome in public safety, the fire department's been trying to be innovative too. If we did an examination of our 911 calls, and so did the hospitals, and basically have determined there are a lot of people that call 911 a whole lot, and wouldn't it just be cheaper for us to go visit them rather than for us to have to send out an ambulance and pick them up? And the hospitals are having the same issue, where they, they get a number of repeat, repeat folks, but actually kind of overrun the emergency rooms.
Parks, this is a very important component of the quality of life for everybody here. We're right across the street from Keast Park, which is smack in Mr. Carraway's district. We've been working very hard in that park, and we'd like for you to all come and see what's been done, and come out to volunteer and help us. But that's not why I want to say, I want to know if we don't have something in the budget for horticulture at the parks. I'm hearing rumors that the horticulture team that we do have may be canceled. So Mr. Hurd, uh, is that true? Because they really are doing a good job.
Reg is gonna help us here.
I thought that was gonna be a job.
I would say, thank you. My name is Reginald Hurd, I'm the Assistant Director for Parking Services. Yes, we offered more energy toward a horticulture program. We did initiate a horticulture unit this year. We made it an exclusive unit independent of our, our regular divisions, but we are considering moving it back into our, our operating divisions as a part of what we call our strike teams, but that's still just being discussed right now. But we are committed to the horticulture program, we're not taking it away.
Great. Also, we kind of alluded to the fact that we're kind of a semi-arid area, or certainly can be, and the park department is beginning discussions with the water utilities department to see if maybe water can provide grants or loans or something like that, so that we begin to put more arid or desert-tolerant plants within our parks, something that's probably will last well longer and is more appropriate for our systems.
And remind us that this is still the proposed budget, so we heard you. So now, turn up the volume on it, come to the next meet, send us some emails, do all of that, and, and then let's see if we can find you to do something to the tune of what you need to have done.
To complete that business about water-wise plants, we're always pushing water-wise, perennial, native and adaptive plants. In the print book, the charts are doing planning because we know how important this is. We do realize that we're headed down as far as water's concerned, we have to conserve water, and we're willing to do that.
And like the lady that was talking about the dogs earlier downtown, if you've noticed that the cacti and the other plants that were planted in the medians downtown years ago, they're, they're thriving, they're doing really well, and require very, very little maintenance, and we could do that in other places. Yes, ma'am.
And I understand correctly that there's no longer an issue under DAS funding?
There probably will always be an issue with DAS funding.
Okay, great. I think most people are animal lovers, and most people also recognize the problem with stray animals, and my understanding is there's only four animal control officers in the whole City of Dallas, which is ridiculous, that stray aren't their staff.
There are actually more than that, and I've heard that as well. One of the problems they've been having, and this is an issue that has to be addressed, has to be addressed very quickly, is we, we do have a number of animal control vacancies that we must fill, and so that is something that we're gonna take care of.
We have an absolutely stellar Dallas Animal Services system, could be a model for the whole country, please don't undermine them.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say thank you for increasing the budget, cultural and recreation.
Thanks, sir.
Because those are my, my peas.
All right. Judy?
You know, and I've got several things. One is streets in our neighborhood, which we're right across from Keast Park, we need to grow. We asphalt a street that doesn't need repair, and we have two streets, Montreal and Perryton, that are pothole after pothole after pothole. I'm not gonna talk about a lot of stuff because I have meeting with Mr. Carraway tomorrow, but these are things that residents are concerned about, that you're getting, we're getting things done in other places, but the needs are not being met. So we've got streets that, Montreal is kind of along with Ruddy, Montreal's a feeder street from across Illinois, residents are coming down to Keast Park. We have wonderful Keast Park, that's, they've got the new trails.
Many of us, you know, don't even have brakes these days, you know, to fix these without the brakes. So, so bicycle safety is, is a big deal, especially now, you don't want to be a bicyclist running a red light now, because now you don't have to wear a helmet in the City of Dallas, and if you get hit by a car, you will lose that contact, so. We are working hard on bicycle education. We have a new bike star here, our, our bike, chief bike planner, who's down from Minneapolis or Portland, some great bicycle cities. And so we're working really hard on the bicycle education.
Oh, what, Portland? Portland?
Portland, you're one of the greatest bicycle cities. So we are working on that part, but you're right, if you see it, please call 911 so we can keep an eye on it, because we do want to discourage that.
So good. We'll take a couple more.
Mr. Griggs, I know you're on the police pension fund. What, what is the story, or what's happening with the money? Did they lose it all on real estate, or? Because, I mean, the big concern is, we're paying a hundred million dollars every year to police pensions into that fund. If they've misinvested it and lost the money, we have to make up the difference. So I, I was just wondering, what's going on?
I did, the mayor's appointed me to the Dallas Police and Pension System, and we do, every year, we make just over a hundred million dollars worth of payments on behalf of our police officers, because they earned it. Many of you don't know, our police officers are on a pension, so that means they don't have social security like everyone else, so that's, that's their system. We have a giant fund that's well over three billion dollars. And my philosophy on the fund is the fund is not there to try to outrace Wall Street or get the highest returns possible. The fund right now, and this is the philosophy at the pension system, as you read in the paper, we've gone through some changes. We want to make enough return to pay our benefits and take care of our police firefighters and their families. So that's our goal right now. And we are where we are, so things happened back in '08 when the economy collapsed. I think it's, everyone knows, the fund was a little bit overextended in real estate, particularly luxury real estate. So right now, we're working on a way to get out of that. We've had our, the retirement recently of our pension administrator, so we're starting a national, if you will, international search on who's gonna run this three billion dollar fund, because right now, the, the issue is, if you unload these investments that we have from '08, we got them, you take a massive haircut. So how do you transition those into assets? They're gonna pay the rate we want to see, so we've got the money to pay the benefits for our wonderful police and firefighters, and that's the number one goal. I can tell you, right now, you've got a great board, it's in really good hands, and I have confidence in it, and so it's a pleasure to serve. I know you read a lot of the changes going on, but the changes have happened in positive, or I keep changing things in a positive direction. Thank you.
Judy, one last, last question.
Oh, I just wanted to, to share a couple of things. I want to thank Southwest DPD, I think they're doing an excellent job for our community, our all-creepy community. With the adding of the new trails at Keast Park, which are wonderful, my husband gets out there and walks quite a bit, I don't, I should. We're seeing, we're seeing, they, they do patrol through Keast Park. Keast Park is in the boundaries of our neighborhood association, so when we run crime stats, which we haven't been able to do since June, but when we have, we've had
Tomorrow, tomorrow you get a
We've seen a great reduction, because what we were having problems with was a lot of thefts. You know, it's like if you go to the shopping center, don't leave your purse in the car. You go to the park, don't leave your laptop laying out in the front seat. But the point is, is that there's been a, a great reduction in the crime in Keast Park. We have a neighborhood association, we have a volunteers and patrol, we have Crime Watch. These are very important things for your neighborhoods, because the more you connect with your residents, now, we don't have a lot of members, we have a lot of houses, but we have people that are interested. Nextdoor.com, I'm on the Crime Watch Executive Board, so I can tell you, seeing the crime stats that not everybody else sees, and I grew up in northeast Dallas like Hollins. Oak Cliff has less crime than northeast Dallas. So that's a good thing. But I just wanted to say, I want to thank the police department. But one thing, if there's anybody from Dart here, I would like to share something that, or the police department, or the county sheriff, or whoever, somebody needs to watch the Dart buses at record and Elk Street because they run the red light on elk. And I have seen five of them in the last month, and one lady almost got hit. So if you live bus, you know, and too many people are running red lights, so we need, you know, I wish we could take away right turn on red, but, you know, somebody needs to address that. But I do want to say thank you from the police department, because they're, they've been over backwards, and Rob Spence is our NPO, and he is absolutely fabulous.
Judy, thank you, thank you for the thank you. I'll let, I'll let the council members, I can close this round.
I just want to thank you all for coming out this evening. I just wanna thank you all for coming out this evening, and I'll stay around for a few minutes if you got other issues to talk about, um, but remember, this is your budget, so please continue to give, uh, your feedback, come to the meetings, let us know what you want changed, and, uh, we'll go to work for you.
And I'll just say the same thing. Uh, we appreciate all of you coming out, we'll stick around, we'll listen to some of your additional concerns, and thank you for coming tonight.